I'd like to reconvene. The Dana Point City Council meeting of January the 20th for 2015, and I welcome everybody here and appreciate your being here tonight to see a brand-new city council. We'll start with our pledge of allegiance. I'll call on Councilmember Joe Miller if he will lead us in the pledge.
(intelligible)
Okay, please remain standing. Our remuneration will be provided by Associate Pastor Jens Christie of the Capo Beach Church.
Mr. Mayor and incoming councilman, I want to welcome you on behalf of our church. It's been my pleasure to reside in this city for over thirty years, and I've watched it flourish under some excellent leadership, and we look forward to the same. So I just want you to know that you have our prayers and our full support for this coming year. Would you pray with me, please? Loving God inspire us with courage and hope as we embark on this new year. Thank you for your new opportunities and help we have been given for the last year. Help us to be builders of community. We each have our hopes and expectations for the year that is ahead of us, but you alone know what it holds for us, and you can give us the strength and the wisdom to meet its challenges and inevitable disappointments and heartaches. May we turn to you for stability and comfort, open our eyes to the sorrows and injustices of our hurting world, and help us to respond with compassion and sacrifice for those in need. We pray for our nation and its leaders during these difficult times, and for all those who are seeking to bring peace and justice to this dangerous world. In the midst of life's temptations and the pull of our stubborn self-will, help us not to lose our way, but to have the courage to do what is right in your sight regardless of the cost. In his name we pray. Amen.
Okay, we'll proceed with our presentations and proclamations that we have prepared for this evening, and our first on the agenda is Business of the Month, which is Woody Hut. So, Robert?
Good evening, Mayor Olvera, members of the city council. I'm pleased tonight to announce the Business of the Month for January 2015, Woody Hut. We are joined this evening by Woody Hut owner Krista Schultman and her husband Boots Bolson. Located in Dana Point Harbor, Krista purchased Woody's Hut over six years ago on September 30th, 2008. Having managed Hallmark stores for fifteen years, Krista always wanted to own her own shop. One day she was told that a gift shop was opening up in Dana Point, and she knew she had to purchase it. Upon purchasing the shop, she realized it didn't quite have that beach-loving, fun-loving atmosphere she envisioned for the shop, so they completely renovated the interior look and its merchandise, bringing in more vibrant colors, more liveliness to the store, and also items from local artists. With the help of her husband, Krista brought in quality woody and nostalgic surf-inspired gifts, apparel, decor, and jewelry. The store currently carries a wide array of beach-themed gifts, all with a Dana Point twist, including t-shirts, signs, sunglasses, jewelry, and more. With all the great items for sale at the store, Krista says the jewelry really stands out because it is all sterling silver brought over from Hawaii and very hard to find on the mainland. In addition to this, it is very reasonably priced. These great items, along with their personalized customer service, make Woody Hut a great place in the harbor to go to for any gifts or memorabilia, and has been the place to go to for visitors for many years now. On behalf of the city council, I would like to congratulate Woody Hut on being selected Business of the Month, and we wish you many years of continued success.
And if Krista and Boots would join you up here, we'll have some presentations for you. Okay. I've known Boots for a number of years, and Krista, it's always a pleasure to see you again. And their little story is kind of really unique. If you listen to it, they said that they got started in 2008, and if you start to look at the economy, what was happening in 2007 and 2008, that is probably not the year you would choose to start a business. And they did, and with a lot of perseverance, things have succeeded. I say that because you're standing here today, right?
(inaudible)
So our first is going to be presented by our Director of Community of Ella Ursula Aluna Nosa, who will be sending the certificate on behalf of the Dana Point Chamber of Commerce.
So I'm not as funny as Heather, but she couldn't be here this evening. She's the Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce, and so she asked that I represent the chamber and give you the certificate, as well as a one-year membership to the Chamber of Commerce. So thank you very much for your commitment and dedication to the city of Dana Point, and the chamber looks forward to your involvement and membership.
Thank you very much. Really appreciate it. Get the special places to work.
All I really have to say is it's a pleasure to live in this town, and it's an honor to receive this award. Thank you so much, everyone.
Boots and Krista, on behalf of the city of Dana Point, takes great pleasure in featuring the Woody Hut located at 34493. You got that? 34493. Golden Lantern in Dana Point. And extends our congratulations on being named Dana Point Featured Business of the Month. Dana Point City Council and the city of Dana Point.
Anything else you want to tell us?
Just, like, well, just one quick thing. I was in this town about three days, and I realized that this is where I had to find my final resting place. I shared the story with Carlos before that I was stuck in a line with about eight people in front of me at Costco, which we all know has lines all the time. Eight people said, "Oh, you only have two items go ahead of me." And I'm like, "Yeah, right. Somebody's going to trip me when I get close to the front, right?" They go, "No, that's the kind of town we are. You look like you're in a hurry. You're in more of a hurry than us. Go on ahead." And it was a major part of what helped me make my decision that this was going to be my final resting place, and this was where I was going to live. I've never met a bad person in this town. I figure if anybody bad comes through here, they must be a tourist.
Boots and I have a little game we kind of do. He and his wife are creative as well, so some of their little gift novelties that you'll see there may have somebody's picture in it, and one that we have put in there has been Doris Walker in the past. Without the knowledge of the buyers, they got a picture of Doris Walker. So Boots, look for your, if you're out there, you might have your picture taken. It may be in one of his surfboards that he's selling, so you might want to stop in there and take a look.
We like to highlight our local celebrities.
Thank you, Boots. Thank you, Krista. Thanks. Next is going to be our Employee of the Month. Deputy Tobin Anderson and Chief of Police Services for Dana Point, Russ Chilton, Lieutenant Russ Chilton.
How are you doing? Thank you. Tobin, why don't you come on up here? You know, here in Dana Point, one of the challenges as a chief is finding the right people to serve this community. And several years ago, when I was a sergeant in the jail, Tobin was on my shift, and what set him apart from everyone else was his communication skills. As a law enforcement officer, you think that, oh, they have to be proficient in firearms and tasers and the law and whatnot, but really, one of the most important skills an officer can have is his ability to communicate. Tobin, I don't know if I ever told you this, but you saved me a lot of paperwork those years in the jail we did, and when you came out here, his energy, his passion for the job, his passion for the community, his willingness to serve is just incredible. We have many, many good deputies in this community. We're very fortunate. But this month, I really wanted Tobin to be recognized. He's taken on some pretty challenging assignments. When I came here last April and were faced with a growing issue with homeless, and how do we deal with this situation? How do we manage it? First person that came to my mind, Tobin Anderson. Now Tobin really wanted to go to SIB, Special Investigations, high-speed, you know, undercover. And I sat him down, and I said, "I really need you to take this on. The community needs you. It's a very touchy situation, and we need someone with strong communication skills." Now, Batten and I, I'm there for you, sir. And I got to tell you, Tobin, you just knocked it out of the park, and that is just one of many, many good things he's done in this community. So Tobin, tonight, I think the mayor wants to read the proclamation recognizing you as Deputy of the Month, Employee of the Month.
Whereas Deputy Tobin Anderson was born and raised in Riverside, California, attending Europa Valley High School and Riverside Community College. And whereas Deputy Anderson played NCAA Division One football as a distinguished member of the University of Kentucky Wildcats. And whereas Deputy Anderson joined the Orange County Sheriff's Department in 2005, serving the citizens of Mission Viejo from July of 2011 to January of 2013. And whereas Deputy Anderson transferred to the city of Dana Point in January 2013 and has served the citizens of Dana Point for two years. Due to his exceptional work ethic and enthusiasm for service, Deputy Anderson was named to the city's community service unit in November of 2013. In July 2014, Deputy Anderson was designated as the city's homeless liaison officer to deal with the issue of chronic homelessness in the city. Since then, Deputy Anderson has provided assistance to countless homeless individuals in the city, providing an opportunity for permanent housing to 23 homeless individuals through a partnership with the Orange County Rescue Mission, and arranged drug and/or alcohol treatment to 10 homeless individuals. And whereas, due to Deputy Anderson's commitment to the quality of life of the residents of Dana Point, he has provided a second chance at a productive life, free of addictions, to at least 33 people. And therefore, now, on behalf of the city council and the cities of Dana Point, I, Carlos Olvera, mayor, hereby congratulate Deputy Tobin Anderson on his selection for Dana Point Employee of the Month for January 2015, and express heartfelt appreciation for his devoted service for the citizens of Dana Point, and express our sincere thanks and exemplary service to our community.
We're not done with him. Once again, last November, we had a tragic event in this community, a structure fire. Anytime we have one of these events, we just pray that there's no loss of life. Back November 15th, Deputy Anderson was out working patrol when a call came in that there was a structure fire up here in the north end of our town off of Los Cabos. Tobin, first on scene, home fully engulfed, residents all out there wondering what's going to happen. He goes, "Is there anyone inside the home?" The resident said, "I don't know, but I know there's dogs in there." What does Tobin do? He goes, boom, kicks that door in a fully engulfed home, low crawls, calling out for if anyone's in there, sees the two dogs in a kennel, but he's now losing his breath, so he has to come back out of the home, takes another big gulp of breath, low crawls back into the home, which is now burning even more, grabs the kennel, drags the kennel outside of the home. Now, it's sad that there were two dogs in there, and one did not make it, and that was Hogan. But because of Deputy Anderson's actions that morning, Henry is with us today, and I invited Henry, who never had an opportunity to say thank you, come here this evening and show his appreciation. I got David and Brian here, the dogs' owner. Can we get a photo opportunity? Do you think Henry can look Tobin on the?
I'm going to let this presentation. Wait a minute, we got one more councilperson. Let's get Scott in here. Scott's involved because he's our city representative for the animal shelter, and Scott wants to do a special presentation.
(inaudible)
Yes, sir. We have another certificate of recognition from you, and this comes from the Coastal Animal Services Authority, where I serve with the great volunteers up there, our manager, the director of the facility, Kim Scholz-Dank. Is Kim here this evening?
Oh, you're right.
And we really especially express, we really especially express our appreciation. It's not just us, but all the animal lovers out there, because I can tell you, not everybody would have gone into a fully engulfed enclosure twice to fetch two dogs. And we all know how important these animals are to us, our pets, our best friends, and Henry here is living testimony to that this evening. So again, thank you very much. I'm not going to read this whole thing, except to say that whereas by his actions on this day, Deputy Anderson displayed extreme bravery and courage in the face of danger above and beyond what was required of him. He certainly was, and he certainly deserves all of our appreciation. And another big hug from Henry. Thank you.
Now, I'm going to give the mic over to Tobin to say a few words. I'm really beginning to believe he changes in a phone booth.
Wow, okay. The dog. Thank you for coming out. Family, friends, thank you especially. You know, I know you guys, we all live very far away. We drive quite a ways to get here, so I really appreciate you guys coming out. Other than that, hey, without my partners, Rob, you make this job so much easier. That way, I get to come, and I see his face, and makes everything go by a whole lot faster during the day. Appreciate everybody's support. Thank you very much.
Next, we have South Orange County Economic Coalition presentation, Dwayne Cave.
Thank you very much, Mayor, city council. On behalf of the South Orange County Economic Coalition, we're extremely happy to be here today to give our presentation to you, and we definitely want to welcome the newly-elected officials here. As a matter of fact, we think it's because of the candid forms that were put on by both the Economic Coalition and Cox Communication, that really threw you over the top, so I think you did very well there. Well, my name is Dwayne Cave, and I'm the chairman of the board for the South Orange County Economic Coalition, and with me is Barbie Daly. Barbie's with the Toll Roads and also a board member on the Economic Coalition. About two years ago, we changed our name from the South Orange County Regional Chamber of Commerce to the South Orange County Economic Coalition to more accurately reflect who we are, what we do regionally, and where we're taking our organization as we're going forward. We want to bring you up to date and provide you with some information on how the coalition can be a resource to you and the businesses here in Dana Point. And if I do this right? There we go. Perfect. Now you go back one. Okay, very good. First of all, we are regional in scope. The region we focus in is where we all live and work, right here in South Orange County. Our members include key stakeholders, companies committed to building a strong business climate right here in South Orange County. Our leadership consists of a corporate board of directors comprising of a who's who in the corporate business for South Orange County, and they're here to work for you every day. I'm going to turn it over to Barbie.
Thank you very much, Dwayne. Do you want to click it for me? There we go. Our mission is to be instrumental in building and supporting the strong regional economy through leadership, advocacy, education, and representation. Our goal is very simply to promote regional business interests by facilitating awareness and cooperation among businesses, governments, and other stakeholders. What sets us apart is that our focus is South Orange County as a region. We fill a gap between our locally-focused chambers of commerce and other groups that have a broader border. Differentiating us from our chamber days, our aim is to be the voice of regional business interests on important policy issues and key initiatives and projects that affect all of our communities. In the broadest sense, we support regional initiatives that further infrastructure, workforce development, and mobility. We're having problems with the clicker. There we go. For example, we actively support and advocate for the 241 toll road completion, SDGNE's South Orange County Reliability Enhancement Project in San Juan Capistrano, the Cadiz Water Project that will bring a new source of drinking water to the region, and many other projects. We are engaged partners with Saddleback College and UC Irvine, bringing together regional business interest and our regional education partners. This past election cycle, we conducted a series of candidate forums, as Dwayne mentioned, and I know several of you participated in those, and held a post-election recap and analysis, both of which were very well received by voters and candidates alike. We also have two very exciting events coming up that I'd like to tell you about. The first is our annual legislative meet and greet, and we'd like to, the Economic Coalition would like to invite all of you to attend, both new members and returning councilmembers, to this Friday evening's libations with legislators. It will be held at Saddleback Memorial Medical Center in their conference facility. This event is open to the public and is free to the public, and provides opportunities for our newly-elected South Orange County, federal, state, and local officials to get together with constituents. We look forward to having a great evening and networking and conversation, and hope that all of you are able to attend.
Our second event coming up at the end of February will be the inaugural South Orange County Economic Report, a data and market analysis for South Orange County. The 2014-2015 South Orange County Economic Report is a unique economic research report that focuses on specifically the cities and planned communities that contribute to $26, $25.6 billion to the Orange County economy. That's right here in South Orange County, $26.5 billion. This report looks at regional economy, including the indicators that contribute to the current and future growth. Community information is provided as a comparison of each city's contribution to the Orange County economy. The luncheon event will be held on Friday, February 27th, at Salbach Community College in the Student Services Center from 11:30 a.m. to 1:30 p.m. Attendees will receive a bound copy of the report, so you have to be there to get it. And featured speakers will be Todd Burnett, president of Salbach College, Anthony Tang, interim dean of business science and economics for Salbach College, and the very only, you won't want to miss this, Dwayne Cave, chairman of the South Orange County Economic Coalition. As an option, cities will be able to buy a table at a reduced fee of $500, so we hope that you're able to make it. So in closing, there we got a clicker working now, we live by the notion that a rising tide raises all boats, and in Dana Point here, I think that the boat thing is pretty important. And while each of the communities in South Orange County have their own personality and much to be proud of, no matter where we live or work, we're part of a strong, vital, and growing region. The Economic Coalition has stepped up to be advocates and supporters of the business regionally, in city halls across the area, and in Sacramento. So we thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, and we look forward to seeing you at each one of our two events coming up, and anything that we can do as an Economic Coalition in the future to be of assistance, we're there for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cave.
I'll proceed on to our consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine, and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the city council, the public, or staff request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Are there any public?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, item number 13.
Number 13. Any from the staff, Mrs. Chukavas?
None this evening, sir.
And any from the council? No. Okay, then we'll, do we hear a motion to move the balance?
Some movement.
Second. All those in favors. Indicate on the wall. It's the first time we all did that. It's a new toy. On number 13, is there a staff report?
Of course, Mayor Olvera. Item number 13 is the next step in the town center process. As council is aware, we're completing our work on the first phases that encompass PCH, and that wraps around and deals with the bulbed-out end at the north end of the town center on the Del Prado side. During the planning process in the EIR that was completed, the vacation of that bulbed-out area was contemplated to allow the property owners at that end to better make use of that vacated land. What we have before you tonight is the initiation or jumping-off point to begin the vacation process. It's not vacation of the process tonight, it's to begin the process, and staff will then conduct some due diligence, work with the community, and it'll culminate in a public hearing where the public will be notified and be able to come in and provide testimony as the council considers the vacation for that area. So what you have before you this evening is simply the jumping-off point for that vacation that was contemplated in the plan and identified in the EIR. With that, Mr. Fowler and I would be happy to respond to any questions the council may have.
Thank you, Mrs. Chukavas. I'll now open the public hearing to hear comment on number 13. First up will be Buck Hill, Capo Beach.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I was just surprised by this item. The two-way traffic has not yet been established on Del Prado, and the park, that bump-out area that changed the direction of Del Prado, has been made into a park-like atmosphere by Brad and his team, and planning it and everything else, and it seemed like a nice open area to preserve some of the quality, open-air quality of Dana Point. And as we're looking for each of those lots to be developed into multi-mixed-use properties, I think open space is something that's very important to Dana Point. The other question, along, what's the lantern street that we're talking, Ruby Lantern? There's about, I don't know, 15 to 20 feet that's being ceded to the landowner there, and I think it would be ideal to use that perhaps, as we are talking about doing on Amber Lantern and on Violet Lantern, as slant-in parking to replace some of that parking that was lost due to the redoing of-- was lost due to the redoing of Pacific Coast Highway and further will be lost as we redo a Del Prado. So it just doesn't seem like the right time to give up public property to private interests when we don't know how is traffic going to flow there? Is the street going to remain two-way in each direction? And why seed land on the side street that could be used for parking after we've lost about 30 or 40 spaces with the new thing? So I think it's worth considering by the city, but it just seems way premature. The other thing I'm worried about is, is it the right time to waste the resources of the city in meetings and public discussions on this? Let's get the decisions made on what will be built on those adjacent lots and see how this property should best be used. Why give it up now? There seems to be a rush for some reason, and it's not obvious. I was hoping that the staff report would explain the why. All it says is, "The city doesn't need this space, let's give it up right now," to the property owner. So there's, why should we, what's the benefit to the property owner? What's the benefit to the city? And why should it be rushed before we've even finished the improvement? I also believe that arch on Del Prado is going to end in this very property. And we don't know how that's going to look, and does it need another five feet this way or that way? So why is this brought up at this time? That's my real point. And I would ask that the City Council just delay putting this on an agenda until it's obvious that it's either good to keep it or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Our next speaker will be Betty Hill.
Thank you, I think you covered everything.
Okay, thank you very much. In that case, I'll, no other late, in that case, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council and the staff. Ms. Chukavas, do you have anything to add to your report?
No, I don't.
On the council, any questions?
Yeah, just, not really a question. I can support the notice of intention. What I would like to see, though, is a, for all of our benefit up here, for all the public's benefit, is a fuller explanation as to why the vacation of the property is needed at this time, what the requirements are. I understand there are a number of steps we need to go through before a final vacation is considered, so gives us some time to address those questions and look forward to reading that.
I know Brad will work with Ursula to make sure that we have a more full and complete discussion as it moves forward.
But, Mr. Mayor, I'd be prepared to move the recommended action this evening if there's no further discussion.
Any other discussion? Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor, vote, or nays.
Very good.
And the motion passes. Thank you, and everybody for their input. We'll now move on to public comments. At this time, the city clerk will read the titles and the ordinances listed on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually, we have no ordinance titles to read this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. For public comments, there will be a three-minute time limit per person and an overall time limit of 15 minutes for public comment portion of the agenda. At the mayor's discretion, the balance of the public comments will be heard after the new business portion on the agenda. All comments are to be directed to the City Council and shall not consist of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain a professional, courteous decorum during their comments. State law prohibits the City Council from taking action on a specific item unless it appears on the posted agenda. And I'll call these up. First will be Nancy Jenkins, followed by Brad Gross. Please state your name and your place of residence.
Nancy Jenkins, City of Dana Point. I want to say good evening to Mayor and to the City Council, and to give you the three new members, my congratulations. I am looking forward to a very productive City Council this year. And after listening to many of you at many forums that we had to go to, I know that this City Council will provide open dialogue and listening to all sides of issues. In this regard, I loved walking the neighborhoods and getting to talk to the citizens of Dana Point and the various businesses of Dana Point. I want to thank a group of Capo Beach residents who have opened my eyes to their various needs. During the holidays, one evening I was coming back from Laguna Beach, and I had the opportunity to drive down PCH through Monarch Beach, through Main Dana, and I was going to Capo Beach, so I went on the coast, PCH, and went up Palisades. In this regard, I noticed that we have beautiful medians off and on in Monarch Beach and through the Lantern District. Wouldn't it be nice if we could have a median down in PCH, down in Capo Beach area, right adjacent to the track? It says then perhaps we would look like a unified city rather than just the three separate areas. As I had the privilege of reading your articles in the various papers, Mayor, I noticed that you mentioned this as one of your goals this year, and I want to thank you in addition to that of being your goal of Doheny Beach. And that would certainly help the people of Capo Beach. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Brad Gross, followed by Ingrid McGuire.
Mr. Mayor, City Council members, City staff, Brad Gross, I'm the director of OC Dana Point Harbor, and I'm a Dana Point resident. I'm here tonight to pass out a few thank yous. First of all, I would like to extend my thanks to the Dana Point Tourism Business Improvement District and to the city, to the general managers of our fine resorts here in Dana Point. City staff, in particular Mike Kilibrue, for bringing Illumin Ocean to the city and into the harbor. It was a spectacular event, I'm sure everybody saw it, and I'm still hearing about it. There were some impacts of the event that were felt throughout the city, but especially in the harbor, and we just wanted to thank everybody for that. And we look forward to the planning meetings for the event for next year. I'd also like to let everybody know, I'm sure you all are aware, that we did finally received our coastal development permit for the harbor revitalization. The hearing at the Coastal Commission was very quick, for those of you that were there or that saw it. And I did not have a chance to say my thank you, so I wanted to, first of all, thank the support of the City Council, the city staff. I know I put a lot of pressure on people as we were coming up to that hearing, and thank you for everybody's hard work. I'd also like to thank the Harbor Merchants Association, in particular Jim Miller, and all of our harbor regulars for all of their support. And thank you to everybody, because we couldn't have done it without everybody's help. And as we move closer to actual construction, which should start sometime later this summer, I'll be back to give updates and progress reports as they come in. So with that, again, thank you, everybody. We really appreciate everything that the city's doing, the T-Bid, Merchants Association. And remember, when we do finally get into construction, the key to our success is everybody still coming to the harbor. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. Ingrid McGuire? Please state your name and place of residence.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Mayor Olvera. I'm Ingrid McGuire. I'm a past member of the Dana Point City Council. I'm a founding City Council member and past mayor of Dana Point. And yes, of course, I live in Dana Point. I'm here today to express my profound disappointment and strong disapproval of the city's decision to make the 25th anniversary of the city's incorporation a non-event. I was here and spoke before the council last March or April. And on the record, during the council meeting, Mr. Chukavas assured me that he had been meeting with then-councilmember Olvera, and an appropriate celebration of the 25th anniversary of the city's founding was planned. I assumed that celebration to take place on the 1st of January 2015, because the 1st of January 2014 had already passed, and the city incorporated on the 1st of January 1989. Well, there have been many special events that took place in Dana Point during the year 2014, many of them having no connection to the city's history or its residents, but not one dealt with the formation of the city or the fact that it was actually the first try of the community of Dana Point to incorporate, three previous tries having failed. I would like to remind Mayor Olvera and Councilmember Schoeffel that a council member is not only expected to provide for police and fire protection, traffic control, and make land use decisions, he's also expected to be a steward of the land and the history of the city in which he serves. The people of Dana Point may never know the real reason why the city elected not to celebrate its 25th anniversary, but I for one, Mr. Chukavas, would like to know the official reason. I understand that this year, the city is celebrating the 200th anniversary of Richard Henry Dana. And I admit that the statue of Richard Henry Dana down in the harbor could use a good scrubbing. Well, Richard Henry Dana has been dead for many years, and four of the founding City Council members are still alive, and they have stories to tell. And these stories are part of the history of Dana Point. So I'm very sorry that you, Mr. Schoeffel, and you, Mr. Olvera, really have not been a good steward of the history of the city.
Thank you very much, Ms. McGuire. Next would be Carl Kuhn, followed by Carol Wilson.
Mind if I move here instead of the microphone, please?
I'll be fine.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Council members, Carl Kuhn. Good evening, Mr.? Sorry. Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Mike, can you help him up?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay, it's on.
Start over. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Carl Kuhn. I live in Niguel Shores, here in Dana Point. I first like to thank, I mean, first like to congratulate the new members of the City Council on your election, and I know you will serve the city very well. And as a mayor, I know you will serve the city as mayor with integrity and...
Honesty. The reason I decided to come tonight, because there are nothing on TV at this hour that made any importance to me. I have seen many Dana Point citizens come before this council asking for the city to do many things throughout the city. In my 38 years in Dana Point, I have only asked the city to do two things in the city that would benefit all Dana Point citizens. My first request was not made in this council chamber, as so many are, but at a men's club breakfast in our community when I asked the then-mayor Weinberg, who was speaking to our men's club about the state of the city. I asked him if the city could put a wheelchair ramp at the south end of Strand Parking Lot so that mobility-challenged citizens and veterans like me could pay their respects to the fallen veterans listed in the Veterans Memorial. At that time, the closest ramp was at the north end of the parking lot. The mayor informed me that the parking lot was county property and not city property. He did say that he would look into my request. Well, let me tell you, within three weeks, as I drove by the Veterans Memorial on Silver Street, I discovered a new ramp on the street. Had been cut in the sidewalk right at the Veterans Memorial. I was so impressed by the city's quick action, I thanked Mayor Weinberg later. My second request was made to this council several months ago. But because of time, I'm going to have to cut this short. San Juan Street had no lighting. My wife fell and broke her wrist a year ago. I made that point to the city. After I spoke to the City Council, the Director of Public Works, Brad Fowler, contacted me to discuss a possible solution, and I met him on San Juan Street. I supported his possible solution, and, thank you. I just want to thank Brad for his work.
Thank you, Mr. Kuhn. Mike?
Carol Wilson? Followed by Penny Maynard? Please state your name and place of residence.
My name is Carol Wilson. I live in Capistrano Beach. I've been a resident here for 38 years, been in front of the council a few times. Some of you may know me, some of you don't. I'm here today to make, bring some awareness to what's going on about the San Clemente Saddleback Hospital that's being closed. And although people here may think that this is a San Clemente issue, this is not a San Clemente issue. This is going to impact Dana Point, not only our residents, but also your budget. So I'm going to talk about a couple of things that I have learned in working with the San Clemente Council in the last few months. I can tell you, living in Capistrano Beach, that the San Clemente Hospital's been the hospital of my choice. It saved my life on two separate occasions. I've been hospitalized there many times during my time here. My care has always been the best, and I have nothing but praise for the care I've experienced there. Now Saddleback Hospital wants to close this hospital, the emergency room, the ICU, and outpatient surgery, tear it down, and build an outpatient surgery center, Medical Plaza, advanced urgent care and doctors' offices. This is a public safety issue, not for only San Clemente, but those of us in Dana Point. If this hospital closes, over 40 ER patients daily will have to be transported to Mission Hospital. Right now, without the closure, Mission Hospital ER is on diversion almost 20% of the time, which means they can't accept any more ER patients, and those patients have to be sent to Saddleback, Laguna Hills, Irvine Medical Center, Hope Hospital in Newport. Mission Hospital in Laguna is also under threat of closure, and one of the reasons it's going to be open this year is the Gross family donated $10 million to keep it open another year. Dana Point and San Clemente, San Juan Capistrano, have over 100,000 people and are growing with new developments. That's a lot of people when you include the population of Mission Viejo and Laguna Hills, that's 262,000 people, that'll be looking at approximately 40 ER beds. It can also cause Dana Point in other ways. If there's an accident or a crime where an entry takes place, our officer may end up in Irvine or Newport, and that will cost us money in the budget to fill their places while they're out at extended areas, taking care of items, things that could be taken care of here in the city, but are now going to be outside. I've been at meetings, and some of the promises that are being made at these meetings by Saddleback are not true, and some of them have been admitted. And I hope that in the next council meeting, I'll be able to bring more of them to your attention, but I really think you guys need to get involved in this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Penny Maynard, followed by Nick. Nick? State your name and place of residence.
Happy New Year, everyone. I wanted to say that I want to thank this, my name is Penny Maynard, I'm a resident of Dana Point. I want to thank the members of the City Council and the city particularly for the Shop Del Prado program. I think it is an excellent program, and it's sure to bring a lot of traffic, a lot of business to Del Prado, which is sorely needed. I've lived here along, quite a while, and navigating Del Prado is not the easiest thing. And to provide this incentive for people, I think is a really good thing. This involves, I'm sure a lot of you know about it, but it involves, if you make a purchase on Del Prado, at a Del Prado business, a restaurant, you can bring your receipts to the chamber office and register... the chamber office and register for a drawing, and each month there will be a drawing, and from what I've read about it, there'll be overnight at a hotel and other items, and there's a drawing each month, and I encourage everyone to do that because the businesses there need it. And I'm sure there's something, Doug, is there something on the website, on the city's website about it?
Personally?
Yes, and there's also the DP Lantern District website.
Good, all right. Thank you very much, and I just want to say, that's wonderful. It's more than I could have imagined to drive traffic there. I thought signs would be great, but this is much more of an incentive.
Thank you, Ms. Maynard. Nick Kay, followed by Terry Grollier. Help me with your last name, Nick.
It's Carhalius, Nick Carhalius. I'm a physician in San Clemente, I've been there for 30 years, or 20 years, and I'm a resident there, and I'm representing the 501-3C of Save Our San Clemente Hospital. And we're committed to educating mainly the three cities surrounding the hospital about the ramifications of closing the hospital. Royal has decided to close the hospital, and in lieu of that, put up an urgent care and a facility with some other amenities. There's a few problems with having a facility with just an urgent care, mainly that urgent cares are not staffed with ER physicians, they're generally not open 24/7. They're not, they don't do pediatric life support, which can be essential, as well as they're not very good at doing adult cardiac life support. They don't have surgeons on staff, and they have no critical care specialists on call to take care of the sick patients. There's been research done on closing communities, hospitals, and ERs, and about the death rate in the surrounding communities goes up by 5% to 15%, and that's why it's so important to us. And there's a few bullet points about San Clemente's ER that I would like to tell you about. Number one is that we see 15,000 patients annually, about 4,000 get admitted. Every winter, hospitals go on diversion quite a bit, and last, that means they can't receive paramedic runs because the ICU is full or the ERs are full. 19 of 26 Orange County hospitals were on diversion at the same time two weeks ago. In that case, you'll have to drive north as far as Irvine or even further, and possibly UCI, and south all the way to San Diego. Our cities are landlocked to a large extent, so is Dana Point. That presents another problem. I drove here, I can get to the south end of Dana Point in five minutes, and when a kid is drowning, or especially you seniors, are having a code or cardiac arrest, minutes and seconds matter, so it's important to have a facility that's that close. Finally, local units and staffing gets pulled away from cities. We have, there's a thing called wall time, so you're going to need more police officers and firemen to service the community. Hopefully you'll have someone like Mr. Anderson, apparently did a great job. I'd like to say that not only are we committed to educating San Juan, Dana Point, and San Clemente about the closure of the hospital, that we're here to save lives, and we would like to ask you guys to pass a resolution supporting keeping open the hospital with those other two cities, and join us in that endeavor. And appreciate your time, and congratulations.
Thank you very much for your comments. Terry Grollier, followed by Jim Miller.
Yes, I'm Terry Goller from Dana Point, and I do want to tell you that we're glad that new council people are here, and we look forward to your tenure, and we hope that you look forward to some of the input, some of the old timers that have been here 40, 50, and more years, and we have a lot of history, we have a lot of input, and we hope that you'll listen to some of our ideas. I was in Dana Point Citizens for Action way back when, sat in a room with a Sausalito planner, and we planned the Dana Point Hotel, the Dana Point Resort, which is now the Marriott. And so we just asked that you listen to the residents, and we were here before the city was, and we became a city because of that road was not paved on Golden Lantern, and it was bump, bump, going up and down, and because of that, we got together and became a city. And we were here, oh gosh, so many things, when we were a county and the people were turning in their apartments for condos, and we were the first low-income city because we had so many low-income houses that immediately became condos. And so, before Del Avian, before Stone Hill, so, but the reason I really want to share something with you, I dropped a letter off today, and we do have rehab homes here, and I think you might be familiar that Costa Mesa had an October ordinance on rules that they put in place for homes that were not registered, and to keep them safe, and the law gives a 90-day application period for group home operators to request permission to do business in certain parts of the city. It implements a 650-foot buffer between facilities, limits the number of beds, and requires mandatory employee checks, along with the building code enforcement inspections. So this is something that residents would like the council very much to consider. We have our own ordinance, so we don't let this out of control because we have a big agenda in Dana Point, and there's going to be a lot of things going on, but this is going to be an important item. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Grollier. I appreciate the 26 years I've worked with you also. Jim Miller, state your name and place of residence.
All right, welcome. My name is Jim Miller. Congratulations, mayor and councilman, new councilman here. I just wanted to thank the T-Bay Group, Federal Major Hotels, the City of Dana Point, especially Mr. Killer Brew, for the Luminotion. I know most of you probably saw it, but I was there, like with Mike, pretty much every night, and I have been here for 30, 36 years now, and I have never seen a single event do so much for our community. I mean, we talk about family, and we talk about community, but that Luminotion brought family and community to our community, and it was a fantastic event. The T-Bay Group hit a home run with it, and all the support with the city, and with the harbor, and the state of California, Dweeny Beach, I mean, it was a great event, and I hope we can continue to see it next year, and thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Miller. Next on the agenda are public hearings, and there are no scheduled public hearings. Unfinished business, there are no unfinished business items to discuss on new business. Is there a staff report?
Of course, Mayor Olvera. What you have before you this evening is January following the sitting of every council, the council comes together, and the first thing they do is come through and consider appointments of council members to representatives for outside agencies, as well as our internal boards and subcommittees as appropriate. Given the fact that we have three new council members, what I would recommend, that as you go through this list, that in order to make a sense of stability, that you consider maintaining the status quo of existing council members where they're appointed, and then fill in as the council would so choose in those vacancies, depending upon the interest of the various council members. I recommend that, I think it would ensure a smooth transition onto the agencies that we work with. At the same time, I think it will allow for an opportunity for the new council members to move in and, you know, assume positions, and learn, and pick up some tips from the existing council members. Having said that, what I'd like to do is staff and I and Mrs. Ward are prepared to go through these items, and then fill as the council deems appropriate, based upon the various levels of interest. And then what we need to do is after you've gone through and identified those representatives, we need to pass a resolution identifying our representative to the OCFA so that we can fill that seat and not miss a beat.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chukavas. We'll just start off at the top of the list that we have as our action document A, and I've been informed that some agencies have requested that the mayor or mayor pro tam be their respective representative. So in the, in the agenda, we see that word has that as a suggestion. So I'll start off with the Age Well Senior Services, is requested that the mayor or mayor pro tam be the alternate. Is there any discussion on that? Okay. Next is Animal Services Subcommittee. Councilman Schoeffel is the lead on that. Is there a request for somebody to be the alternate to Mr. Schoeffel? Pick one. Mr. Miller, you are now on the --
Well, Mayor Olvera, if I could, there should be some discussion here, and I only do this, I very respectfully ask, I would suggest that perhaps you parse it as, is there anyone interested in participating on that, because there could be some council members who have a desire to participate, and I think identify those members who wish to participate, have a robust discussion as, if there is one, and then decide who's going to be, seat that spot, because at the same time, while I'm sure Mr. Miller would like to be an alternate on, there may be other council members who have an interest in filling that role, and I very respectfully just suggest that as an approach.
I did do that. Nobody spoke up. I turned to Mr. Schoeffel and asked him to pick.
Very good.
But, in complete transparency, anybody else want to challenge that? Okay. We're fine with Animal Services with Councilman Schoeffel and Councilman Miller on Animal Services. Association of California Cities for Orange County, no one continues on that. This council has been very active in supporting League of California Cities, and hasn't really participated recently with the Association of California City. So I like to make the recommendation that we drop this committee. Any other discussion or suggestions?
I would, I would support the mayor's suggestion in that regard.
Any other comments? Okay, then we will drop Association of California Cities.
Mayor, if I could, what I'd like to do is offer up, I'll draft appropriate correspondence to come from the mayor indicating that the council has chosen not to participate in 2015.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority. Councilman Schoeffel is our lead on that. Is there somebody who would like to volunteer to be the alternate for that? Maybe, Mr. Schoeffel, you can give us an intro, what it is?
Well, it's actually a very important committee. The JPIA is our insurance pool, and that keeps us solvent, and it takes care of our liability concerns, and there's a lot of policy issues associated with it, and it's actually a fair amount of fun to participate in those meetings, too, so I would encourage anybody who is eager to help the city save money, reduce its liability exposure, and get to know a lot of other small-city elected officials around the entire state to be part of that, if they're so inclined. Mayor Olvera, if I could just add, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that Mr. Schoeffel has taken a very active role in working on the JPIA, and was an integral element as to the JPI accepting the quiet zone. And so I've been after Mr. Schoeffel for a number of years to consider getting onto its executive committee where they could benefit from his experience. I know he's had a variety of leadership positions and other, but I would again just thank Mr. Schoeffel and encourage him to consider seeking out executive committee, the executive committee there so that they can get the benefit of his experience.
And I also like to add to that my thanks because of your professional experience in being able to provide input to that committee.
Thank you.
So is there a suggestion on who would like to be his support?
I'll volunteer to be the alternate, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Vexoric is the alternate for the JPIA.
Welcome.
Foothill Eastern Transportation Corridor Agency.
I think you missed Capitol Unified.
Yes, thank you very much. I did miss one. Capistrano Unified School District. Mr. Schoeffel was the alternate on that. Do you want to brief us on that, Mr. Schoeffel?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. This is a, an appointment that doesn't see a lot of meetings over time, but the meetings, when we have them over time, tend to be fairly important in regarding pretty matters of fairly high interest between the Capistrano Unified School District and the city. I think that I've only attended one in the three or four years that I've been on it, and maybe former Mayor Bartlet attended two or three. So it's one of those things where it's important to get together with the agency to talk these things out at the time, but it's not something that takes a lot of time out of, out of a councilman's schedule to deal with, so I would certainly be interested and willing to remain as part of that team, and would encourage anybody who has a keen interest in education or kids and their well-being, and how that relates to the city, to be a part of that as well.
Thank you. I think it'd be good for you, too, with that experience, to continue as the designee for the, for the Capistrano Unified School District. So who would like to be the alternate?
I'll volunteer for that.
Joe Miller for the alternate. Very good. Thank you, Joe.
Mayor Olvera, just to clarify, that this, like the Sewer and Water Committee, both council members serve on that as opposed to an alternate and a lead. So it would be both council members participating.
Thank you. I see that, thank you. Foothill Eastern Transportation Corridor Agency is the next one. This is a fee committee that requires at least once a month meetings, maybe two. Mr. Schoeffel, you were the alternate on that. Do you want to brief us on that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is our, the 241 Toll Road Agency that handles the management and all the affairs of the Foothill Eastern Toll Road, which I think many of us probably drive from time to time, and getting out to the inland empire and around Orange County. I would say that while there's a minimum of one meeting per month, depending on how many subcommittees you get involved in, which, that really depends on your interest in the subject matter, there could be as many as four or five meetings per month, so it can actually take up a lot of time, but it is one of our most important mobility agencies in the county, and it is, its success is certainly vital to the welfare and the benefit of citizens of Dana Point, so it's going to take some, some commitment on whoever's appointed to this one to fill former Mayor Bartlet's shoes, because she spent a whole lot of time on that, and I would, I would encourage really anybody who's interested in mobility issues, and feels they have the time to devote to not only the board meetings, but the committee meetings that go along with the board meetings, to attend, and I'd certainly be, I've been on the 73 board for five years, and be willing to, you know, help anybody who was willing to serve along and, you know, get them acclimated.
Did you want to move up to designee? You mentioned a lot about commitment, but...
Meaning, serve on both boards?
Yeah.
If that's the council's pleasure, I would be happy to do that, yeah.
Any discussion, comments, alternate?
I would, I would, if I'm going to do that, though, and I'm pleased to do that, and honored to have your confidence in doing that, we will need some alternates for both of those boards to, who are be ready to, you know, pitch in, because quite often, there are just some scheduled conflicts that, you know, that come up, so. And if I could, Mr. Schoeffel is, is going to be leaving us in two years, and I can't emphasize the importance of these committees, and so I think it would be very, very prudent to identify someone who could possibly be groomed to take Mr. Schoeffel's place when he's termed out in two years, because these are, just to echo and emphasize Mr. Schoeffel's remarks, these
these are two very, very important committees that impact the city of Dana Point.
I would like to volunteer for that position.
So, would that be, if I can just clarify, would that be alternate for both boards? Or one of the boards?
Let's make that one of the boards.
Okay, yeah, let's make that, because we're on the one board now, right.
Okay, so for the Foothill Eastern, we got Councilman Schoffel as the designee and Councilman Tomlinson as the alternate. Foundation for the Great Park. Mr. Shakavis, you want to give us a brief on that?
You know, candidly, this one, I'm not sure that there has been a meeting, and given what's going on with the Great Park, I hate to say it, but I'm just not sure what the status of this is. Mrs. Ward, do you now have any better information?
No, we haven't really received any feedback from them, so we've just been carrying it over, but we haven't heard anything.
I'm willing to drop it until we find that there's a need.
If I could, sir, could we, could I ask that the council appoint one person to serve on this? And that way, we have a presence, because we may be required to have a seat. I just don't know, but I think if we could have, perhaps if the mayor would like to sit on this, you know, and respond as needed, and if such time as this goes away, then it goes away. But absent any official communication from the Great Park, I would really strongly suggest we have at least one person assigned.
I'll accept that recommendation, that the mayor be the designee for the Great Park. League of California Cities. There's an annual conference that represents the city in the League of California Cities. Councils in the past, and this council attended the introductory session last week up in Sacramento about the League of California Cities and how they can play a role in it. So, I think it's important that we maintain that. And so, they have asked that the mayor and mayor pro temp continue as their designee and their alternate. Any discussion on that? Seeing none. Ocean Institute Board of Directors. Ocean Two is here in the harbor. They have previously requested a mayor or mayor pro temp. Any discussion on whether that should change?
Mayor Oliver, if I could, there's been a deviation from this policy, and I just want the council to be aware. Back in 2010, Mayor Bartlet had expressed a desire to serve, and I believe, Kathy, if I remember correctly, she has served as the council's representative for the last four years.
I believe that's correct.
And so, the council has not been following that practice. If the council so chooses, it could be the mayor with the mayor pro temp, but I just want the council to be aware that it hasn't always been that way for the last four years.
Okay, what's the council's pleasure? Anyone?
It would be hard for me to attend those Tuesday dates for prior conflicts, so I wouldn't be able to serve on that one.
Well, I'll take it as mayor. I think I can make all those dates. Okay, any discussion on that? Seeing none?
Mayor Oliver, I would then ask that you identify an alternate on this in the event, Mr. Tomlinson, who's the mayor pro temp, has indicated that he would not be able to attend.
Yes, thank you. I'll indicate Councilman Vexoric. Think he'd be able to make those dates as an alternate, not necessarily commitment.
It's certainly hard to predict the future, Mr. Mayor, but I also have a tight schedule at those times. But if no one else is willing to do it, you can put me down as an alternate.
Okay, Mr. Vexoric, for Ocean Institute alternate.
Well, I might run Mr. Schoffel if he has any interest in it, and I'm not sure if Richard's schedule is tight, and I know that can be a problem for a lot of people.
If there's any reluctance on Councilman Vexoric's part, I have a relationship with the Ocean Institute, worked with those folks for years and interact frequently with its management and have been a donor for many years, so I'd be happy to serve as an alternate if you think that's a problem.
Thank you, Councilman Shorik, appreciate that.
Thank you. Orange County Council of Governments. I was an alternate, but I never attended one. Mr. Shakavis, could you brief us on that?
This is a, what was referred to as a COG. Subregions of SCAG create these COGS, and they are where cities get together and discuss, much like a chamber, economic development opportunities. I think it's an important seat that we have representation, and so, I would suggest that we appoint a council member and then an alternate, and staff will work with whoever the council appoints to get them up to speed.
Is there anybody that expresses an interest in being on the COG? Councilman Miller? And for an alternate? I'll take the alternate. Okay, Orange County Fire Authority. This is a per diem board that we meet on, also requires a resolution. Maybe, Mr. Shakavis, you can give us, we know we had former Mayor Weinberg involved that for a number of years and went through a lot of reorganization with it, so maybe you can give us an explanation.
Absolutely, Mayor Oliver. This is, this again, like the Toll Road, is one of our most important boards. As a result, the Orange County Cities came together and formed the Joint Powers, I mean, the JPA for fire service, or the Orange County Fire Authority. And what this is, is I believe it's 24 cities. We're, the city of Dana Point is a structural fire fund city, which means a portion of our property tax goes in and pays for our fire service. There's a number of the cities who, at one time, had their own fire departments, but now contract with the county on a fee for service. They have a seat at the table, but this is a very dynamic group. As you may have been following it in the newspaper, it's had a number of issues. And I like to think that things are starting to settle down up there, but it's, it represents the city on one of our most important aspects, and that's public safety, specifically fire service. So, it's something that it could be very involved, but it's very, very important in keeping the city at, you know, making sure we have a seat at the table.
Okay, so, based on the executive committee meets on monthly, and then there's the board meeting meets on the odd months, so it looks like a lot of time. Is there a councilperson that wants to volunteer for that?
I'll volunteer for that.
Joe? Councilman Miller? Is there an alternate?
I'll volunteer to be the alternate.
Councilman Vexoric is the alternate. Orange County Library Advisory Board. I've attended all those meetings for the last two years. They meet in Tustin, it's quarterly. It's not a very well-attended board meeting. We went through a period where we were trying to amend the bylaws so we could pass changes to the bylaws, when we never did have a quorum even show up. We finally got through that, and so now, it's making it a little bit easier to conduct business at it. And I might as well continue, since I know that one, on the library. Is there an alternate? Any volunteer for an alternate on the library? You probably won't have to go. Mr. Miller? Okay, Orange County Vector Control. Again, Mr. Weinberg was, Mayor Weinberg was long-term on that. Mr. Shakavis, you want to give us a...
This is another one of those important boards, as it deals with vectors, rodents, mosquitoes, what have you, and West Nile virus. It's a board, again, that it's very important to the city, and it can be very involved, but it is a two-year appointment. So, I would recommend that the council fill this seat.
Is there a volunteer for the Vector Control District? Is there a volunteer for the alternate? I'll take the Vector Control. Is a volunteer for the alternate?
I don't think there is an alternate.
There is none.
Oh, there is none, this is two-year term, okay. Then we'll move on to San Juan Keen Transportation Corridor Agency. Mr. Schoffel, you've been there, like you mentioned, for a few years. I presume the introduction is the same as the 241?
Yes, different road, same management. Currently, the chairman for the second time, and we're dealing with a lot of pretty big issues, so...
Okay.
Same time commit, a little less of a time commitment as 241, but still significant.
Is there anybody on the council that wants to be the alternate?
I would volunteer for that.
Okay, Councilman Tomlinson? South Coast Water District Sewer and Water Committee. Two previous members on that. I've been pretty much personally involved with the, since I live in Molten Nagal Water District, not South Coast Water District. I've been pretty much involved in community participation group with that, and so, I like to stay with, working with water, so I like to be the primary on that. We need two people.
Yes, like the CUSD, this is two council members who meet and discuss very high-level policy issues that eventually wind up before each respective board.
Okay. Is there a volunteer for a second one?
And those meetings are held at Dana Point City Hall, typically.
And, Mr. Mayor, if nobody else volunteers, I'd be willing to serve as the alternate.
Okay, thank you.
Again, this isn't an alternate position, this is...
It's a, or the second position. It's a meeting, required meeting. SCAG, Southern California Association of Governments. Mr. Shakavis, please.
This is a layer of government that's there. It's the Southern California Association of Governments. This one's particularly important because it deals with land use issues. They deal with affordable housing-type issues. This is for their general assembly, and essentially, once you get in, it's what you make out of it. So, again, I would recommend that we have one council member attend, as well as an alternate.
Is there a volunteer for the SCAG?
I'll volunteer for that.
Councilman Miller? Is there a volunteer for the alternate? I'll support Councilman Miller on that one. Okay, South Orange County Association of Mayors. Mr. Shakavis?
This is a quarterly breakfast that's held, it's rotated and circulated amongst the cities, and we're going to be hosting one in February, but this is typically the mayor or the mayor pro temp in the absence of the mayor. We, the agenda is pretty fluid. It's usually topical, what's going on in the region or if the city's who's hosting it wants to showcase an element, they can do so. One of the, we're hosting it in February, and one of the, we're going to ask Mr. Munoz to come and make a presentation or talk about sober living homes and what's going on. So, I expect robust discussion there, but this is typically the mayor and the mayor pro, or the mayor pro temp in his absence.
Okay, any discussion on whether to stay with the mayor, mayor pro temp? Seeing none, we'll stick with the mayor, mayor pro temp. South Orange County Watershed Management Area. Mr. Shakavis?
I'm going to ask Brad to talk a little bit about this. This is something that's very important. As you know, we're in the San Diego region, and what this has to do is with the watershed management program, where we come together and talk about those aspects that affect the watershed. Brad, why don't you give a little bit more detail on this one? Because this one's a very important one as well.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council members. This is our South Orange County regional organization that works to choose priorities for trying to solve some of our water quality, water supply, water efficiency, habitat, and flood control issues that are broader than each of the individual cities. The primary focus has been on trying to develop amongst all of the stakeholders the right priorities for state grant funds from things like Prop 84. Now, you know, the recent election, we had the water bond, so there will be funds that will be allocated. So, this group looks at how that money might be used to, all across the southern region, to the most benefit of all parties amongst those different kinds of programs. It is, I think we meet about four times a year at this point, typically in the afternoon for a couple hours. If the primary is not there, I serve on it as the alternate in this past year.
So, you serve as the alternate?
I have, yes.
Okay. I'd like to be on that one. I served with Marilyn Toms on the Orange County Historical Commission, and so, I have a contact there, so I'd like to be there and work with Mr. Fowler on that one.
Next item is our boards, commissions, and subcommittees and task forces.
Arts and Culture will be taken care of later.
When you say taken care of later, if I could clarify, there is no council representative here, and I believe later on this evening, we're going to be asking for direction to advertise for vacancies on the Planning Commission, the Traffic Improvement Subcommittee. Kathy, when is the, when will we be coming forward requesting permission to go out to advertise for vacancies on Arts and Culture?
Arts and Culture, the terms for Arts and Culture expire at the end of June, so I will be coming back to the council to request a recruitment in April. So, you'll be able to do interviews probably in May.
Yeah, so that will come back in April, interviews in May, and appointments in June for those where there's a vacancy.
With that, I'll mention it now, for the benefit of our three new council people, like for the resumes of all sitting, non-expiring seats be submitted as well, so the new council people can learn of their background as well. Destiny Committee, Mr. Schoffel?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Destiny Committee, as I'm sure you're aware, because you're a co-member of this council on it, has not met, I think, for probably the last two years. But before that, the committee which was founded as essentially our city's Business Roundtable had a very robust attendance, managed to accomplish a lot of very productive things when it did meet, including our trolley, which got, or our shuttle service, which got derailed by the Coastal Commission, hopefully temporarily. And there's a lot of interest in our business community in those meetings. I would be inclined to keep it as an active committee, because I do think it's important as an interface between the city government and the business folks out there. But it may turn out that there's a sort of a, an even more, a better and improved format, you know, for it that this council can address later on in a more detailed setting. But so, for now, I would, certainly, it's been a very productive committee in the past, has a lot to offer. I think you'd enjoy, you know, being a part of it, and I hope you decide to stay as a part of it, and I would certainly love to stay as part of it.
Yeah, I agree with Councilman Shorik and Mr. Shakavis on this to continue with the people that are assigned to the Destiny Committee. Homeless Task Force.
This one is one that's very important, and quite candidly, due to the efforts of Chief Chilton and Ursula, we've made tremendous progress. Deputy Anderson, by virtue of him being of Employee of the Month this month, has done an absolutely outstanding job. As a result of this, we now have a homeless liaison to deal with the homeless community, and I think the results in the short period of time that Deputy Anderson's been working on this, when you look at how we're truly transitioning people to a better place, I'm just, I'm really excited, and I want to thank Russ and Ursula for their efforts here working with the church community, as well as the other interested parties in the community. So, I would suggest that we continue this, and we identify a council member to work with. work with Russ and Ursula, and myself as appropriate, to keep the momentum moving.
Is there a volunteer?
Mr. Mayor, I've worked with a number of folks who are involved in, in this subject matter, in the, in the city, for a number of years, a lot of the stakeholders who are part of the committee now. If there's no interest by, by other council members, I would be happy to step into Mr. Bro's absence on this one. It is a, it is a problem that is not going to disappear, and I think we need to continue a concerted effort toward it, so.
I agree with you, and I appreciate your, years of experience on the council to do that. Any other discussion? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I might suggest one thing, is it might be useful to have an alternate for this particular position, because these are the types of meetings which, depending on the circumstances, could require more frequent meetings in, you know, certain seasons, you know, things like that. So if there's any council persons who would like to, in fact, I would suggest you would probably be a great alternate if, if you were inclined to serve. I know that you also had some, some working relationships with some of these folks as well.
Yes. Yeah, I'll accept that as an alternate for the Homeless Task Force, with Councilman Schoffel as the lead. The IRC, the Investment Review Committee. Mr. Schuck, have a please.
Yes, with this, we have two council members that work with city, and we also have what's unique here is we have two appointed reps from the community. The city manager has an appointed rep, as does the city council. Larry Rolap has been my appointed rep since I've gotten here, and when you take a look at Mr. Rolap's resume and experience as a financial advisor to virtually almost every city in the state on matter, on financial matters, he's, we're very fortunate to have him as a resident, and we get his services for free in this capacity. So I'm, I'm going to keep Mr. Rolap plugged in as long as we can. Having said that, with the local accountant Nancy Baumann moving out of state with her husband, we have an opening, and so what I would suggest is to get direction from the council. Unless the council would like to make an appointment from the dais, what I'd suggest is that you direct me to advertise with the other committees and commission that's going to be doing. We can advertise for a spot, we can have a subsequent interview, and we, the council can plug someone in, in the absence of a direct appointment from the dais tonight.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, this, this committee goes straight to the city's financial integrity. It's very important that we have the highest qualified public members and council members who really are extraordinarily diligent in matters that aren't, quite frankly, that much fun. So it is, it meets infrequently, but it does very important work.
Thank you. I agree with the city manager that we should go out with a wide net to see those who are interested, and then the council can go through those resumes and follow Mr. Schoffel's advice.
So Kathy, let's put the ad out with the, the other notifications, and we'll collect resumes after 30 days and bring it back.
Okay. And as far as the committee members, I'd like to follow Mayor Bartlet on that one, and with me I'd like to take John Tomlinson. Okay? Any, any comments? Are we comfortable? Okay. Ocean Quarter Quality Subcommittee. Mr. Schuck, have a please. Ocean Water Quality.
Yes, this is, this again is another one of the appointments, and since you're becoming our water guru on the, on the dais, I would suggest that you consider doing this. This is the Ocean Water Quality Subcommittee, and what it is, it's, it's been around since before I arrived, and when I arrived, ocean water quality cleanliness was, was, was a paramount interest to this city. It was a high priority, and, and what's interesting, I can't tell you how many millions of dollars we've invested underground in diversion and water treatments to control urban runoff. As a result, we also, early on, had a very extensive educational program in educating the next generation as far as controlling runoff. We've worked with the Ocean Institute over the years as far as education, and this is a group that works with Mr. Fowler and Lisa Zawaski to, to take a look at programs, policies, and practices in the community to control urban runoff, and a lot of good stuff comes out of this, and it finds its way sometimes up to the city council. So I would, I would recommend, Mayor Alvera, since you're becoming the water expert, unless anyone else would do, that you would consider participating in that.
Since I served in submarines, I'll take it.
I knew there was a nexus.
Lots of water. Next to consider is our Sister City Committee.
Mr. Mayor, the, this, this committee has, has been inactive as longer than most volcanoes on the, on, on the west coast of North America. So while there, while, while there could be, and frankly, is a good argument to maintain a sister city relationship with the incredible town of Viterbo, Italy, with, with which we have that relationship, that relationship, you know, we, because we are a city that lives and dies on tourism and, and international tourism, and things like that, the, I don't feel that there's a need at this time to keep a committee going. If that, if and when that relationship starts becoming active again, then we might consider reforming the committee. But keep the relationship, probably suspend the committee for now.
Yeah, I completely agree with Councilman Schoffel. A lot of committees depend on the support of the members and the desire to be actively involved, and so if that should come about, I support Councilman Schoffel's idea that we resurrect it. So for now, we'll drop the Sister City Committee. Any other discussion on that? That's the end of the list. Madam Clerk, do you want?
Mayor Alvera, if I could just have one clarification. On the, on the, on the T-bid, the Tourism Business Improvement District, I'm identified as an ex officio member. It's not reflected here, but I believe early on it was myself or my designee, and so Mr. Kilibrue has been filling in in that capacity. So if I could, with council direction, I would like to say the ex officio member would be the city manager or their designee. The other thing, and again, I, I think, if not tonight, I have to tell you, with the, with the Elephant Parade and the Illumin Ocean, I think at some time, possibly, and I think this is something that the council might want to discuss at another night, that the council consider identifying a council member to become involved in the T-bid as a representative or as an ex officio member. This is a, you know, you're the stewards of this, but this is a Business Improvement District made up of the hoteliers, and I think at some point in time, because of where they're going and the importance of this, that the council consider possibly identifying one of your number to serve as in an ex officio way for this. But I just throw that out for, you know, discussion or consideration at a future date.
Okay. Thank you for that input. So at a future date, based on your recommendation, we'll, we can revisit this. Very good.
But with the success we've had, I think it's something to consider, but I do also want to put in that the city manager or his designee.
Okay.
Okay?
So be it. Madam Clerk, is there anything you need, like a motion for all of these at once?
I think we can do a motion based on the discussion that's been-
And to include the resolution.
And to include the resolution, which, of course, we will take care, I will take care of, make sure that's properly taken care of.
Okay.
Finished up for signature.
I'll entertain a motion that we accept those that have been assigned to the committees, and include that our action document C, which is a resolution for the Orange County Fire Authority Board.
I would make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Everyone, please vote.
My screen is not lit up.
Mine's blinking. There we go.
Got it.
Okay, that takes, takes care of item 17, so continue on new business with item 18. Mr. Schuck, have a please.
Yes, this is the time for the council direct staff to proceed with recruitment and appointment of planning commission members and traffic improvement subcommittee members. What we would do, the timeline on this, we would, if so directed, Ms. Ward will dispatch an ad in the local newspaper seeking volunteers or people considering, who want to be considered for appointment to these two boards. I would expect that we would get the resumes and applications back at the end of February. At such time, we would then, based upon the number of respondents, schedule a time in March to interview candidates, and then the council will have the opportunity to appoint. Mayor Alvera had indicated, because there was a, three new council members and a new majority, possibly a new majority on the board, that the council consider, or I think there was some consensus on the art and culture for all of the existing members, regardless of whether or not their term expires, to put in an application so that the council can identify, the new council members can identify with the, the existing members and make the appointments as necessary. So we're here, and we would seek direction.
Okay. Comments by the council, other than a direction to go ahead for the staff?
I, I just have one clarification, Mr. Mayor. So we'd only be selecting positions for terms that are unexpired, is that correct, or would that be all the terms?
All terms.
So we'd be going out with-
You will have the option to evaluate all terms.
So, you know, I do have some concerns about that. I think some of these members on these commissions have dedicated their time as to a term certain, and the way I read some of this, some of the backup supporting documentation, actually, that would be a removal if we, if we asked for them to, to, before their term is expired?
On, on the bottom of that one page, it says that they basically serve at the pleasure of the council. So your statement's correct.
Well, I'm a little concerned about that. I would, I, I think that's a lot of turmoil for some of these commissions, and I certainly, certainly think we should consider, carefully consider that.
I think that we should all take Councilman Tomlinson's advice, and I wanted you to all be able to read the resumes, and then we can make that decision at the time we're selecting. If you will kindly bring that comment up at that point when we're looking at them again.
Okay, I can do that.
Okay. Anything else? Do you have your direction, Mr. Schuck, have a please?
I do. Kathy Ward, was there a clarification?
On, on the staff report itself, am I correct in saying who's retiring? Oops, sorry. Let me, let me repeat that, since I didn't have my, my mic on. On the staff report itself, I was correct in saying who the staff, the terms that were expiring for both planning and traffic. However, on, on IC, that on the, like, supporting documents C, I didn't correct that information there. So there's some old people listed that shouldn't be there. There's some terms that aren't correct that shouldn't be there.
So for the record, Kathy, could you provide us with the correct names and when their terms will be expiring?
Yes, so Bob Elder's term is expiring March of this year. Bill Klein is expiring March of 2017. Diana Orlando expires March of this year. Michael Leahy expires March of 2017, and Wayne Vega expires March of this year. I just wanted to clarify that. I apologize.
Okay. We're all done? Okay, very good. Okay, we have now come to staff reports. Mr. Schuck, have a please. Mr. Munoz?
Just want to make you aware that there's a very interesting case before the United States Supreme Court right now related to signs. In particular, the court is looking at political signs, which is something that we see around here once every two years, as you all know. Interesting issue that's been raised is whether, based on the regulations that apply to those signs, if a religious discrimination issue had come up, an issue raised by a pastor, and the means by which churches are allowed to regulate their signage. Based on the Court of Appeal opinion that came out, and what everybody seems to expect will be coming out of the Supreme Court, it's likely that all cities will be, you know, looking very closely at their sign regulations and doing an overview, or rewrite maybe, of their sign regulations. I've taken a quick look at our sign ordinance, and just sort of based on my crystal ball, which is as valuable as nothing, I suppose. I think that ours is likely going to be pretty consistent with what we get out of the Supreme Court, but just something to put out there on your radar, that we'll certainly want to have a discussion of the case when it comes out and the implications of our own sign ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Munoz.
For the record, Mr. Mayor, I'll move the recommended action.
It's been moved and seconded. Follow the recommended action. Vote? Thank you. Okay, we come down to council reports, including city-related meetings attended, and I'll start off with Mr. Miller.
The only thing I have to report is my attendance at the League of Cities Conference.
Mr. Tomlinson?
I've given my list of the meetings to the city clerk, but I'd like to thank the city for sponsoring me to go to the League of Cities training for mayors and new council people. I think that was great, and I'm very pleased to have attended and have the opportunity to do that. Thank you.
Mr. Schoffel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to prepare my list for the city clerk as well. Just like to wish everybody a Happy New Year, come back here and, you know, get, get started on the next 12 months. Good to be back.
Mr. Vixorik?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will also submit my list to the city clerk, and I'd like to echo Mayor Pro Tem Tomlinson about the opportunity to go to Sacramento and, and learn just what it is from the League of Cities to be a new council member. I thought it was invaluable. Thank you, that's all I have.
I too will submit to the city clerk, and I emphatically impressed to all these council members that you, remember that you have this list due, because our, our city clerk will need this list shortly. Since our last meeting, the, the big thing that's happened has been Illumin Ocean, and the feedback I've been getting from Illumin Ocean is that it's what greatest thing since sliced bread and Dana Point. The businesses were overwhelmed. One comment I received from businesses, it was like having an extra month in the year with people visiting Dana Point. So hats off, kudos to the T-bid, Mr. Schuck, have a please, for bringing this on, and for the hoteliers to help sponsor this for us. With that, I'll close this meeting, and we'll adjourn. Our next, next regular council meeting will be on February the 3rd at 5:00, in the city council chambers located in 33282 Golden Lander. Meeting adjourned.